He said he is, yeah. I just spoke with him like four minutes ago, so he'll be here.
He's like, "Oh, you got a big one today."
I do, I grabbed the one from the front.
Okay.
Oh, there, I see Ellie's name.
Yeah. Ellie, are you there?
Be back in one second, I gotta get the plug for my computer. I got plenty, never mind.
Okay. Ellie, at six o'clock we're live, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Come here, it's Ellie.
Hi Ellie.
Mr. Renner.
Hey Ellie.
Good to see you. Okay, so is everybody here? Ellie, we have a quorum, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're all ready to start, Mr. Jackson, ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, call the immediate order, let's rise the salute flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic which we serve, one nation indivisible, with liberty
liberty
and justice for all. Ellie, can you please read the certification of compliance?
The time, date, location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Crest and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable confidence admitted to this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you, Rockwell, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Stable.
Here.
Mr. Plantstrom. Mr. Hertzell.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Meyer. Mr. Raittich. Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, thank you. Swearing in as professionals, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Rock, please raise your right hand, do you swear a firm testament before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Now, okay, on to the agenda. Ellie, we're not going in order, right? We can't do the correspondence now?
Actually, I have a change. I did receive an email from the attorney who's been hired to represent the correspondence request, Mr. Pepper, and he can't be here tonight. So he asked that we carry that correspondence request to the next meeting, which is December twenty-second.
Okay.
Uh, let me see if they provided notice for that, I don't think they did. Brian, do you think they provided notice for that? They did, they provided notice for that. Make it confident to carry that to December twenty-second.
Okay, do we need a motion? Or just carry it? Hmm? Well, in favor to carry to December twenty-second? Aye?
I'm not voting on this.
Okay. Okay. And, public hearing?
Uh, hold on just a minute, Mr. Jackson, do you want to make the announcement for the correspondence items to be heard on the twenty-second?
Um, the correspondence, okay, members of the public who may have been advised, SD twenty-ten, Joseph Lipschitz has been carried until December twenty-second, did you say?
Correct.
December twenty-second, two thousand twenty, six o'clock, virtual format, as has been previously advertised. Interested persons should tune in at that time if they wish to make comment or participate or listen to the matter. There will be no further notices.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, the public hearing was changed, Ellie, right?
No, public hearing, we just have the one minor subdivision.
Okay, there was something else on the agenda that was taken off?
Yes, at some point last week, I believe they had issued getting the notices out correctly, so they will be noticed for the December twenty-second.
Okay, do we have to announce that?
No.
Okay, so on to the public hearing, number one.
This is SB twenty-four twenty-six, made by David Holt, with a minor subdivision, five blocks, two, Reed Place.
Okay, thank you. And Terry, could you please go through the report?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from the January sixth review that Ellie has up on the screen. Getting on the bottom of page two, under submission waivers, uh, on submission waiver for submission to Ocean County Planning Board. We support the waiver for hearing purposes, since the plans will ultimately have to be filed in coming of approval.
Do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation?
I'll make a motion to Ellie.
Okay, Ellie moved, do we have a second?
Labby seconds.
Labby seconds, all in favor, aye?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna continue under zoning. Uh, section two, page three, various relief includes, um, lot area variances on several properties, as well as lot width variances. Minimum side yard setbacks required for proposed lot twenty-point-oh-one. And it appears, as shown on the plans, that there is a pre-existing setback condition for an accessory structure on lot twenty-point-oh-one, as outlined in our zoning comment number five. Um, we're gonna get testimony on comment number six with regard to the adequacy of parking on future lot twenty-point-oh-one. And I believe that's all the relief, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney on this application?
It's Glenn Lyons.
Glenn, okay. How are you, Glenn? Okay, Mr. Jackson, wanna swear in, Glenn? Mr. Jackson?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Mr. Lyons, will you please raise your right hand, do you swear a firm testament before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Glenn Lyons, professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Okay, please proceed, we recognize you.
Okay, the application is to subdivide two existing lots on Reed Place into five new single-family home lots. Uh, one thing I wanted to clarify is, the, while the map shows the existing house and pool, a decision has been made to remove those. So, we're not requesting uh, those two variances anymore. So, items number, excuse me, four and five in, under zoning, are no longer applicable. Okay, and actually, six is not applicable, uh, because that's regarding parking, and any new house on the property will have the required number of spaces based on the number of bedrooms. So, and that'll be something that'll be reviewed at the time we submit for building permits.
Right. Glenn, the, all those variances, four, five, and six, is only regarding on the existing house?
Yes.
No new lots have any var, four, five, and six, right?
Correct.
Or, was I correct, or that was, right? Okay, it's not, okay, so we're left with the variances on two and three. Thank you, Ellie.
Right.
Okay, so please, please proceed.
Okay, so the variances under item, uh, actually go sort of backwards, is item three. I think that's the easier of the two to provide testimony on. Uh, if you look at a tax map of the area, I'm trying to do it right this. Um, never mind. Uh, you see where our lots are highlighted on the tax map that Ellie has up on the screen? Um, on Reed Place, there are uh, on the, on the side of, yeah, on Reed Place, on the opposite side of the street, those are seventy, most of those are seventy-five-foot wide lots. Uh, there's eight seventy-five-foot wide lots and one twenty-foot wide flag lot. And then, the remaining one, two, three, basically, the remaining four lots up until lot twenty-two. So from twenty-six to twenty-three, those can also, uh, be subdivided possibly in the future. And they would yield seventy-five-foot wide lots with, uh, I think it's a twenty-two thousand square feet.
How wide are your lots?
Our lots are, we have four lots at seventy-five foot wide and one lot at eighty-six feet wide.
Okay.
And that was just because, uh, that gave us the most room for the existing house, the way that existing house laid out.
And how wide do you need?
Right, we're not gonna change the lot layout.
How wide do you need?
And the zoning, the ordinance requires a hundred feet.
It's an R-twenty?
It's an R-twenty.
Okay.
So, and then if you look at the rest of the tax map, basically, none of the lots on this block are a hundred feet wide. There's some eighty, eighty-six foot wide lots. Ninety-six and a half, ninety-three. Um, so they're all in the nine, you know, in the, in the mid-to-high nineties, with the exception of the last lot, uh, out on New Hampshire, that's a, that's a bigger lot. Um, actually, actually, no, that's not, that, that last lot that shows uh, on next New Hampshire, that's been subdivided in half also. So that's like two ninety-fives or something like that. So, generally, in the, in this area, you know, seventy-five-foot wide lots are the norm on these blocks. As you work your way south past Towers and down, uh, the, the whole block gets narrower, so the lots are wider. And they're, and they're wider now, you know, the, so, um, but seventy-five-foot wide lots are not uncommon on Reed Place. So you won't know, driving down Reed Place, or, I'm sorry, mixing up, yeah, driving down Reed Place, you won't notice any difference when these lots are subdivided, because they'll look just like the lots across the street, it's two seventy-fives, you know? So they'll fit in nicely.
How do be your lots?
Our lots are two-hundred-and-thirty feet deep, while the ones across the street are three-hundred feet deep.
Okay.
That's where the, uh, area variance is coming. Um, so, I, I, we did it, we, we did some research on the neighborhood. Um, Ellie, if you could go back to the tax map, uh, and if you could go all the way, no, the other way. And then, and then if you, uh, if you could go, can you go a little bit further to the where it says Reed?
Ellie, you're a mind reader.
She's, she's
She knows, she knows exactly what everybody needs.
All right, so, there are a number of undersized lots now that have been subdivided in this R-twenty area. Uh, starting at Reed Place, uh, that subdivision, that, two lots on the corner, uh, lots four and five, they were recently subdivided. It hasn't filed yet, but those, that was three sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot uh, square foot lots. Uh, the next, it's the next two, which is three-oh-one and three-oh-two. Uh, no, they're conform, they're conforming with area, but they're not, uh, okay. So then, one-oh-one, one-oh-two, one-oh-three, they're sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet. Um, then going up a little bit more, you have five-oh, uh, five-oh-three, uh, which is, I think that's the smallest of the, of the three. It's fourteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five, and then five-oh, yeah, five, I'm sorry, five-oh-one is fourteen-six-twenty-five, and then five-oh-two and five-oh-three are eighteen-thousand square feet.
And it's not R-twenty, is it, too?
That's all R-twenty.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, we've got seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty square feet for four of our lots, and we've got nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty for, uh, the, the last lot, you know, for one, for the last lot, which is the lot all the way where lot twenty is now. And then there's also another subdivision, but it's about three blocks uh, south of where we are. Uh, that has, that's block eight-fifty-five-point-oh-six. Uh, lots thirty-two-point-oh-one-point-oh, point-oh-three, those are fourteen-thousand-five-thirty-three-seventy-five, and thirty-two-oh-two fourteen-five-fourteen-point-fifty. Uh, so altogether, the lots I pointed out are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There's, there's, uh, ten uh, other undersized lots in the neighborhood, and those were all subdivided recently. Uh, the, the one on the very corner of Reed and Albert, uh, that was, I think, two or three months ago, you, that one was approved. Uh, so that's not, that hasn't been finalized, and it's not on the tax map. Uh, all the others were, were approved in the past, uh, three to four years, based on the filing dates.
Do you have any side yard setbacks, front or side, besides the width and the area? Are there any other variances?
No, no, we're not requesting any other variances, the houses that be built with conforming side yard setbacks.
Okay. Is there anything in the report that you don't agree with?
Uh, no, the report was, uh, short and sweet, actually.
And you're putting up sidewalks?
We're gonna put in curb and sidewalks. Um, uh, one of the, um,
And they're all single-family houses, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Single, reg, regular, they're based in the neighborhood, single families, some have basement apartments, yes.
Glenn, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just since it seems to have come up last minute, if that house, all the way on the left, is not remaining, are you still keeping that one lot all the way to the left a little bit larger than the others? Or are you intending to split them all evenly?
Uh, no. Our intention, I think David's on the, on the, on the zoom, on the meeting. I think the intention was to keep that one larger.
Okay.
David, David has to be sworn in if he speaks.
I just wanted to avoid you having to come back in the future if that was changing, so, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Glenn, does your client wanna speak? He just has to be sworn in, if yes.
Uh, David, if, if you wanna change the lot widths to make them, make all five of them equal, you'd have to be sworn in to testify. Uh, if you leave that last lot the way it is, then you don't have to be sworn in, you don't have to testify.
Right, it's gonna be the eighty-six wide.
Okay.
Like that.
Yes, we are, we are leaving, as Ellie asked. We're leaving the lots the way they are today.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Dave?
Yeah, well, I, I would prefer, looking at this, that the lots be equal. There's a very small distance between the houses, and it would give them more of a feeling of living there, not, not being a, almost an apartment. You know, I don't know, how many, how many foot side is ten?
Dave, if you make it equal, you may be adding a foot or, to each house, to each side?
You'd be, you'd be adding, you'd be adding about two feet to, to three feet. It really isn't gonna make, because the setbacks don't change. You know, if you give somebody a, a seventy-eight-foot wide lot, they're gonna build a, a, you know, fifty-three-foot wide house.
Glenn, you don't have three foot per house. You only, you have eleven feet, the total. It's eighty-six, seventy-five to eighty-six is eleven.
That's right, eleven feet, if you, if you split it up, it's only, it's slightly over two feet.
Per house, that's a foot on the side.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, you are correct.
Okay. Any other questions for any board members?
Yeah, time table, if I may, good question.
Yeah, fine, please.
If they remove the house, when, when is that done, before they get the CO for the rest of them, or beginning of construction?
Um, I, I believe it's either being removed now, it may have been removed, I haven't driven by the property recently, or it's scheduled to be taken down probably before we file the map.
It has to, because they're not asking for any variance, so.
Correct. When I signed the map, since that variance for the side setback hasn't been approved, um, before they can file that map, either the house needs to be down, or they need to provide a bond for the removal of the house, because that variance can't stay there without approval.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask the applicant if he will be okay putting sidewalk from the basement entrance to the drive, to the front, not including the driveway, separate independent sidewalk? I said cement sidewalk, concrete.
Um, David, they're asking if, if you could put as, a, a
A path?
Yeah, separate
That's pathway, separate pathway, yeah.
Does the board feel that that adds to the curb appeal?
Uh, one se, one second. Uh, you have to be affirmed then.
Oh, you swim in?
Uh, Mr. Jackson, could, not swear, affirm you. Mr. Jackson, you affirms the halls?
Yeah, Mr. Hulse, please raise your right hand, do you affirm the testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, so Hulse, you, you can proceed, please, please.
Yeah, if the board feels that that adds to the aesthetics, then I'm, I'm prepared to do that as well.
I, I think not so much aesthetics, but the safety, that Mr. Stable is concerned about.
I, I don't see a timeline, so I don't know how the entrance is gonna be, where it's gonna walk from and to, so I think it's, it's important.
So the details is that, you're saying to the basement, where that basement access would be, it should be, um, paved up?
Yeah, it's a separate, a separate entrance, not including the driveway, because if somebody has four cars over there, then you know where to walk.
Understood.
Glenn, do you have the room? Do you have the room to make a pathway from a concrete path sidewalk without the driveway?
We, we, we have, uh, ten and fifteen-foot required side yard setbacks, so we'll have the space.
You have the space, okay. Mr. Stable?
Yeah, a question.
Okay, one second, Dave, uh, Dave, one second. Uh, I, I don't know if they heard, Mr. Stable just said that he wants the window wall covers. Glenn?
The metal one, not the block they wanna afford.
Yeah, it's a safety issue.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stable, and Dave now.
Yeah, this will have a, uh, I'll call it a porch on the rear end, correct?
Uh, Glenn?
Yeah, I, I can't think of the right word. But, uh, how, what is the size of it?
The houses will have decks in the rear, yes.
Yeah, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. Uh, this is on the rear end, but
Dave, Dave, it's two-hundred-and-thirty feet long, each property. So as big as it makes this house, I think there's plenty room to make a deck in the back, without violating any setbacks.
Yeah, from the house, it's twenty foot to the setback.
Well, that's from the building envelope.
Yeah, like, like, it's, the, the houses in this neighborhood generally are fifty feet back from the front property line.
Right.
We normally have to put a septic either in the front or the rear. So let's say, let's say it's fifty feet, the house is gonna be another fifty feet, the deck is gonna be, say, fifteen feet. That's a hundred-and-fifteen feet. The lot is two-thirty. That only gets us halfway through the lot with, with the front, you know, a fifty-foot front yard, a house, and a deck. There's gonna be no problem with any of these decks being too close to the property line, I can assure you.
Would you, would you agree to, uh, uh, set the front yard setback at a certain distance, so that they're not all, uh, in, in different orders? In other words, you might, you, you could build anywhere within the building envelope. Would you agree as a condition to, uh, have a uniform frontage on those houses to give some kind of balance, or?
Um, yeah, if you
Mr. Garfield, excuse me, Mr. Lyons, and, you know, Mr. Garfield, I, I, I had a experience with a subdivision that's actually around the block from my house, and everybody was upset because the, uh, they got the subdivision, and then they put the house all the way against the back, uh, setback. And, um, what that did is it put the house in everybody else's backyard, they have an enormous front lawn. And, and in some places, that's appropriate, but, you know, I, I just wanna put that out there as a tool. What the board has, you can require that the front yard setback be uniform or at a certain distance, and that the, the house does not be all the way against the back lot line.
Um, okay, right, just, if, if you look at the, if you, if I could explain a little bit, if you look at the, uh, the, the Google map that you're looking at, and you see our five lots subdivision, and then just to the right of that, there's a single-family home. Okay, that's a new home.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really what, some, you're gonna get a house about that size. Now, if you see the way, see there's a big clearing in the backyard? That's where the septic system's gonna go. And then the well for the house has to be a hundred feet away from the septic system, so that'll be in the front yard. What happens out on Reed Place and all the other streets out here is, once the precedence is set by the first, like, new residential house like this, if you don't follow it, it's impossible to put everything in. I can't put a well in the backyard of the house, the lot that Ellie's pointing out, and put the septic in the front, because I can't get the required health department sec, separation. So whatever the first guy on the block does, everybody's gotta be that way.
Okay.
So there's, there's really no chance of taking the house and pushing it all the way to the rear property line. It, it just doesn't work with well and septic.
Okay, thank you. Then it wouldn't work with the garbage, taking out the garbage. Okay, any other board members have any questions?
Right.
Okay, seeing none. Uh, Glenn, you agree with everything else in the report?
Uh, yes, there's a, there's one comment about, uh, uh, repairing the road or something, I forget which comment it was now. Uh, we'll do whatever the township ordinance requires as far as, uh, road repair when, when the, when the houses are built and we put in the curb and sidewalk. I think it's comment fourteen. Um, talks about half-width road reconstruction. We're only gonna have two very small excavations in the street for the gas. Other than that, we're not digging up, we're not putting in any sewer, anything like that. But, but the township has an ordinance about what you have to do when you, you know, when you do work within the municipal roadway, and we'll do
We're okay with that, Chairman, uh, if the condition in the resolution indicates that uh, restoration is to the satisfaction of, of the Lakewood Engineering Department.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be great.
Okay. Uh, I would open up to the public right now. Ellie, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I have, um, hold on, let me open this one back up.
Ellie, you have till nine o'clock.
Uh, I'll go quick. There's eight of them, I'm not sure if Mr. Jackson reviewed them, or you want me just read them all one by one?
If it's repetitious, not, but, uh, but, uh, I'll start with number one, let's see where to go.
Um, we should also open
My recollection when I reviewed the comments is that they were all positives.
Yes. Um, and I
Support of the application.
I believe this name is logged into the meeting. Um, we should see if there's any residents that wanted to speak, and also advise that they cannot speak as well as have the letter read into the records, do you wanna part?
Yes, I will in a second. Ellie, looking through all of them, is there any opposition?
No, there's no opposition.
Okay.
They were all in support of the application.
Okay, so I would open up to the public if, if, Mr., what was his name, Hertz? Hello, the one before, if he wants to speak?
Yeah.
If you wanna speak, you have to be affirmed or sworn in?
Yeah, but, yeah, hello?
Hold on one sec, Mr. Jackson, do you wanna affirm him, man?
Yes, I don't see him on the screen, but please raise your right hand, do you affirm the testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Ellie, go back to number one. I forgot his name.
He's muted, he's muted, he's muted on the phone.
What, Mr. Hertz, are you there? Please unmute yourself.
He's muted. Why don't we just read what he wrote into the record and move on?
Okay.
I'll read his, it looks like a number of the others are a copy case, so um, just looking
Part of the record, and I'm not getting a sense that the board is opposed to this application.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you're satisfied that the that the the letters are all on the record, they're all, they all support, there's like six or eight and the board has had an opportunity to review them, they're up on the screen. I don't know if it makes sense to read them individually, um, if the board's going to do what I think it's going to do.
Yeah, hello?
Yes. Is it Mr. Hertz? Okay, you have to be affirmed then, okay.
Mr. Hertz, uh, please raise your right hand. Do you uh affirm that the testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, please uh just briefly tell the board uh what what you'd like to see them do with this application as far as
I I live, I live on the block, I live down the block closer to Albert Avenue. My lot is seventy-five wide, I've been living here for around five, six years. Seventy-five wide is definitely big enough for me and my family, my whole entire block at seventy-five wide. And I think having another five lots approved will be a very big enhancement for this block, for the neighborhood. I think that part of the block is very not built up, it's 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 dangerous, it's scary, it doesn't look nice. And I think, you know, the size of the lot, seventy-five by two thirty is very, very big. Mine happens to be seventy-five by three hundred, but the rest, the vast seventy feet, I don't do anything with that and nobody really does much, so I don't see a difference between seventy-five by three hundred long or seventy-five by two thirty. They're both the same in my eyes. And I think if we don't get this approved, God forbid, there might be a risk of possibly selling to a school or something, and that will be detrimental for all of us. We see that around the corner in East Bruce, they have a school, and nobody wants to move onto that block, it's not a good block, and all the other blocks in this neighborhood are beautiful. Most of the blocks have a lot more houses on them. We really, really want more houses on our block. And as you can see, as all, everyone with the, for this application, I really strongly hope that this gets approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd I'd like to point out, I just got an email from Moche Zynis.
Okay, now, just one second, Mr. Jackson. All the other emails, we read them, was put on the record, and basically, they're all the same. Uh, oh, they, they want this to be approved, so it's on the record. Now, on to Mr. Zynes, what does he say? I think you're muted, Mr. Jackson. I see your lips moving, I don't hear you speak.
My lips move, but you can't hear what I'm saying?
Now I hear you, okay.
The uh, all right. Uh, to your point, uh, Mr. Zynes, last time the applicant agreed to an enhanced drainage system due to all the flooding in that area. And he would, can we get an enhanced drainage system in this case? So I'd ask that to Mr. Lyons, can you do an enhanced drainage system? First of all, Mr. Lyons, do you think that's necessary or appropriate here?
Well, I'm not sure if there's any drainage problems in the area. What's typically done when there's no ru- no new road improvements per se? Uh, each single lot, when they go in for plot plan approval to the engineering department, is responsible for installing dry wells. Uh, the purpose of that is to manage the drainage uh from the individual homes. Um, I do not have enough information on the property as to whether there's any existing drainage problems out there um that would be solved by this. Glenn, it's my understanding you're not proposing road improvements, correct?
Uh, we're, we will be widening about four feet, as everybody does.
All right, um, if deemed necessary by the engineering department, you think it might be possible to put in uh a perforated pipe under portions of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other correspondence?
No.
Okay, thank you, so I'll close it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on this application?
Time table, make a motion to approve this application as requested with the condition of the sidewalk, as we discussed, the window wall, and the uh restoration to the engineering department as Terry indicated for the drainage and and the road improvement if needed.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, here it's Ally.
Ally seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have nothing else on the agenda, right?
We have minutes to approve, I'm sorry, I'll pull the agenda back up.
I do have all the time we need, Ally.
November twenty-fourth minute.
I'll move to minutes.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, all in favor, aye. Approval of bills?
Move.
Moved, second, all in favor, aye. Okay, Ally, uh, December twenty-first. Yeah, we, it's
Twenty-second.
We have a full agenda on that?
Um, we have five applications and the correspondence item we just carried.
Okay, I think that will be our last meeting for this year, right?
Yes.
I would like to ask everybody, please, please participate. Let's end off with a full board this year.
Sounds like a
Put a twenty-second.
The twenty-second.
Right. Mr. I think Isaac said he will be joining us.
Okay.
Got a bookend of the year.
By the way, I never got a chance to ask Mr. Lyons whether he usually went for the top bunk or the bottom bunk on
That was a weird picture, yes.
That's behind him.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It sounded like a Lakewood house more than where it is.
Okay, guys, everybody, good night.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks for being here.
Everybody. Bye.